This conference will now be recorded.
First thing on the agenda is the agenda itself. Does anyone have any additions or additions? Okay, we'll keep the agenda as is. Then we have open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anyone have anything?
I just asked personally that people aren't actively talking, that they mute their mics so we don't get background.
Good reminder Bernie. And then announcements and staff report. Does any, do any of the commissioners have any announcements?
Me? Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say how amazingly happy it was to see all the college students at Target today buying all their back to school stuff. It just, I know it's a crazy time, but just to see all these students in their masks, buying their stuff for their apartments and dorms, just kind of made me feel a slight moment of normalcy. So just wanted to say that.
Anybody else? Paul, did you have any staff report today?
Only what was in the packet and that it's continued to be pretty busy in our office with lots of people doing little projects, big projects, lots of refinancing, which isn't a surprise since mortgage rates are under 3%. But it's stayed very busy. We've been very active. I'm sure that you've all heard of some, some noise issues happening associated with a street being built over in the golf course. And so the council got some, had some feedback on it, some discussion last week. And we've been managing all that and making sure that we're doing the best with our regulations. There may be, the council asked for a review of how we deal with noise and vibrations. So there may be something relates to the LDRs for you in the next month or two on that. If the council decides that, that they need to take further action on it. That's about it.
Okay, then we can just jump right into our work session on the land development regulation overhaul. So first up for this discussion is kind of a presentation from Paul. We had a, we had a great packet with an outline. And I think Paul, you were lined up to give us an overview.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. So there's a lot of information in your packet there. Most of that and most of what I'm going to speak about this evening in some form, you've seen before in the very different outlines that Sharon has given you or, or drafts of things that you've looked at. But in speaking with Jessica, we both felt that between the break that's taken place between the members of the community, who may not have gotten all the pieces and also just sort of the, as we're trying to bring the whole thing together, that it would be valuable to to sort of repackage it in a way that is clear to everybody on some of the key questions and key issues, and making sure that you're all comfortable with the, the, those key elements of it. Karen, can I ask that you turn your screen off, your, your video off until you're ready for a question? And if you're struggling, thank you very much. So everybody is more than welcome to. But as Jessica said at the last meeting, we're trying to keep the videos to those who are presenting or at, or, or the commissioners until somebody wants to ask a question. So if you'll indulge me here, I've got a hopefully fairly short PowerPoint. And then we can dive into the questions that are on the table as we, as I said in the memo, the objectives here for the evening are to make sure that, you know, you've got all your questions answered on the big picture. Any clarifying questions, any research that you need for us? And then in the next couple of meetings after this, we'll be pulling together what you talked about last week with natural resources and, and the, and the development side of it and sort of trying to bring this all to, bring it all together. So just one moment here. All right. What are you seeing now? Are you seeing both the current slide and the next slide or just one slide?
There's two slides, Paul. The subdivisions and PUD from the ground up. And then there's a smaller quick stop back project components, quick step back project.
How about? Hang on.
It's just one slide.
Okay, perfect. All right. So subdivisions and planned unit developments from the ground up. This is a picture of South Village. Just a quick step back. What are the components that were, that you're all working on here? So there's subdivision regulations, there's master plan, there's PUDs, there's site plan standards, which are the very specifics of the individual properties other than single and two family homes. And of course, there's the environmental protection standards that you were looking at last week. All these come together and play a specific role. Tonight, I'm going to speak mostly about subdivisions and PUDs. But in your packet, I had some information about master plans and site plans and how they sort of connect into this. Planning and development is just sort of a quick reminder, this is something that we keep reminding ourselves throughout the whole project. They're not intended to solve every development question in the city. They're a tool in the toolbox. They are a way to address medium sized neighborhoods, larger neighborhoods, and some sort of specific infill circumstances. They go together with subdivision regulations, which we're going to talk about, and some, some bolstered regulations that really become the foundation of them. They can complement zoning district standards. And while you have done some work on that, there's a lot that can be done in the future to have just standard zoning and standard subdivisions work for smaller neighborhoods. And that really, really involves right sizing everything to the scale that you want. They could take the place of PUDs, but the trick of them is that once a zoning district standard is in, it's in for the entire zoning districts in all circumstances. And I think that, you know, when starting this project out, the focus was on new neighborhoods and not necessarily what happens with the four tenths of an acre lot that's in the middle of the orchards. And so that might be a separate project. And then of course, another tool in the toolbox, which you have implemented are form based codes, which you've done in city center and you've really applied some elements of it along Shelburne Road, which are now being employed by new projects in South, in, in front of the DRB. There's a lot of text on this page, but the key things that I wanted to highlight, subdivision regulations are the foundations of any division of land. Currently in our, in our, in our LDRs, the term subdivision, the term PUD sort of gets completely mixed in. It's one chapter that deals with both, but they're really separate subjects. The subdivision is the division of land. It's the provision of streets and utilities. It's what you do with your larger natural resources and utilities. And then planned unit development is really the arrangement of land, of development on land. And so what these drafts try to do is to separate out the basic elements of a subdivision and apply that first, and then apply PUDs and their flexibility afterwards. So when we, I know that there's been a lot of interest in the natural resources side, so I thought I'd start with that. That's not really the focus tonight, but just a reminder, the resource protection standards that you've looked at two weeks ago would apply to any form of development, including subdivisions. As drafted in here, the subdivision lines created would need to avoid, or in very specific circumstances be allowed to, but not impact natural resources. So if you had a 50 acre parcel and there was a large 10 acre wetland amongst that, the draft regulations would say that that wetland needs to be its own parcel. The current zoning regulations and subdivision regulations that we have in place don't specifically say that. Many folks choose to do that in their subdivision, but some people, for a variety of reasons, decide to carve things up and you wind up having a wetland that is managed by six or seven or 10 different entities, as opposed to being managed by a single entity from the perspective of the natural resource. Whenever you can have a single entity managing it, it's in the lot, it has, it does much better. You know, I sort of, I think of it in terms of if there was a piece of the wetland in everybody's backyard and then you was, you know, you send your 12 year old kid out to mow the lawn, they don't know where the edge of the wetland is. And so each property winds up being a little bit different in terms of impacts to the wetland versus having it managed entirely. I'm going to turn off my webcam because it's deciding that my computer is a little bit overloaded. So hopefully you'll still be able to see the presentation. So another, another way of thinking about that is in South Village, for instance, the major natural resources are all managed commonly versus in Butler Farms, the streams and the wetlands and that are sort of integrated within the parcels. So that's, that's sort of the, the two examples there. In a standard subdivision, and we can, we'll talk in a few minutes about a PUD differently, but in a standard subdivision hazards and level one resources are set aside as undevelopable. So they're not part of your buildable area. And the rest of the resources are part of your, your buildable areas. And they can be included into a building lot so long as the, the, the house is located outside of that. We'll talk about what that means in a few minutes, but essentially it, in a standard subdivision, you're just drawing lines so you don't transfer density from one area to another area. Each lot needs to stand on its own. The next component of subdivisions, when I really wanted to focus on this evening was streets connectivity and blocks. So this has been a hallmark of our regulations for a long time of ensuring that there's an interconnected street grid, that the connections where they can take place do take place, and that they are tying the, the right type of road to one another. Street design is a component that was, that you all put in, in the form based code. But when you did it, your expectation was to apply it citywide at a later date. So this would be when this comes in. So all those street types that are in city center would be matched to the type of neighborhood that you're building. So there's a lot more predictability for everybody about what a street is based on or looks like. And then blocks and lots. This is a, this and the street design both are a little bit based on the current southeast quadrant standards, which is different from the rest of the city. And this would, the, the proposed subdivision regulations would establish a pattern of development, obviously, you know, taking into account the natural resources. But beyond that, setting up a very specific block pattern. And what's proposed to be in here, which is based on the southeast quadrant standards, is that citywide, in all residential and mixed use neighborhoods, the block perimeter, so the, the, you know, looking around all four sides of it would be less than 2,000 square feet. And that the average block length would be 500 square feet, 500 feet on average. There's also some minimums in there to make sure that there's traffic safety. But this is a really key component that we're going to talk about under PUDs in a few moments. And I really wanted to make sure that commissioners felt comfortable with this. As we said, this has applied for 12 years now in the southeast quadrant and it's worked pretty well. And I wanted to give some examples of how this has been applied across the city. So now you don't have to read as much text for a few minutes here. With the help of Sharon Murray, I was, we, we went through and we looked at a bunch of different neighborhoods in South Burlington to see what's our historic pattern of, of neighborhoods. And so on the left is Mayfair Park, you see that there's a perimeter distance there showing 1,800, 1,900 feet around and there's the, the sides. So again, we're, this would meet all those standards. You'll see that there's two rectangular ones and one sort of triangle one that all meet it. On the right hand side is two neighborhoods off Heinsberg Road. The Orchards neighborhood has all sorts of these blocks all over it, both the original orchards and the, the follow up, some quite small blocks and some medium sized ones of interest. On the far left there, you see that the block that's there is both residential and commercial, including Shelburne Road. Here's a neighborhood next to Dorset Park or next to Veterans Memorial Park. There's some very small blocks in there. And then there's one much larger one, which Sharon and I talked about how would something like this have been looked at today? And likely today, there would have been some kind of a break between, in the middle of that block. Those are all, I believe, stormwater ponds and tennis courts and things that were established as part of the neighborhood. And so that, that might've had a mid-block connection in it. We have some more new ones that have also followed the same pattern. South, South Village on the left, there's a bunch of blocks that are like this, but I just picked two from phase one. South Point on the right, again, meeting the standards. This is a larger area showing Dorset Street and the Barrett Street neighborhood. And you'll see that for the most part, the standards are being met. There is one sort of interesting one, and I think it sort of comes back to the city having the official map. So if you see the big block that is San Remo Drive, sort of right in the middle of your page, I created a block in the middle there. It actually would have been quite a bit larger than that. But the official map calls for eventually there to be a street to be built, right where it says 341 in there. And that, again, is, is intended to break it up so that you have manageable block sizes that are pedestrian oriented. And as we'll see in a few minutes, really designed to, to, to be shaped for a lot of different kinds of development. Here's two examples that are commercial ones, more or less on the left. This is only currently under development, but this is the Larkin Terrace. On the far left of the screen there is the Palace Nine Movie Theater. Right under the word South Burlington is where the new Larkin Terrace is. And the way that the streets have been laid out for their master plan, the blue area would be a full block. And on the right is the corner of Farrell Street and Shelburne Road. It's almost a block there. Bacon Street is a street. The, the DRB was not, applicant was not able to quite make the street work on the far right hand side, but it functions as a street. So I think, you know, that's, that's a pretty close prox example. The draft regulations would not apply in terms of block sizes to industrial areas. They do get pretty close to meeting, but at this point, because of the different scales of things between here behind the airport, Technology Park, Meadowlands, we're proposing that the block sizes not apply here. It's just a totally different scale of development. And then lastly, I just wanted to show you one quick example from Williston in the Taft Corners area to show a whole slew of different blocks that are almost entirely meeting the same standard, whether we're talking about residential, commercial, mixed, all different kinds. This is kind of an example in our neighboring community of this. I'll take a break here in a second, but I wanted to, you know, just sort of jump into where the, how this relates to our specific work here. So with the subdivisions as being the foundation, the idea is that a standard block size can fit lots of different kinds of development. And that could even evolve over time. So if you see in the top part of the screen, each of those little dots represent maybe single family homes. And then as you go sort of right and then down, it becomes larger and larger, in this case residential, until you get to the far bottom right, where, you know, in the same block, you could be at, you know, 30 units an acre versus six units an acre, and both can work with the same, within the same block. And that's really what we're trying to help move towards here is the idea that the, the blocks create the future potential for South Burlington. I was giving a presentation a couple of months ago to Dave Kaufman's class on planning in Vermont. And one of the things that we talked about at the very beginning was that once roads are set, they're in almost all cases there forever. And, you know, we talked about the Roman roads that are still in place. And so thinking about South Burlington very long term, there's the shorter term of what's a neighbor good, going to look like in the short term? And then there's the, once that road is there, what can take place decades from now? Just as we're seeing along Shelburne Road and Williston Road now being, being rebuilt. Now we're going to start to move towards the, the questions that talk about density. And that's where we're sort of going to get to a few minutes here. I'll take a break right at the end of this section. This is an example out of Eugene, Oregon, that's showing how different arrangements can work basically in the same block area and starts to bring in this idea of housing types. I know that you've talked about housing types a few times. You've given us a thumbs up on pursuing them. And I wanted to spend some time this evening sort of talking through with you all and getting your questions about what does it really mean to build based on housing types rather than to do it based on numeric density? So the idea here is that the, the numeric density becomes secondary to the question of the scale of the buildings on the site. And so you could envision, for example, a duplex that is an over under duplex that's the same size as a single family home. They may be on the same exact footprint of a parcel, but as two families instead of one family. And so this is sort of a, a quick example from Eugene about different forms that could apply. And we've got some from South Burlington in a few minutes. Here's just sort of starting to talk about variety. And this is something that I, I know that the commission is asked about, about how do we get more variety in housing types? It relates to this sort of question of the missing middle of how does one support different scales of development and infill, but still be consistent with the intent and, and of, and of making sure that neighborhoods are cohesive and not feeling like a new building is just dominating the other buildings around it. So this is where housing types can really come into this, where they bring their own lot sizes with them and they fill out a block. And in a minute, we're going to talk about, after the break, we're going to talk about the different ways that a block can be filled or left unfilled. Again, this is just like the last slide. This is a couple of sample ones from the missing middle worksheet showing how a duplex or a single family home or, or some other arrangements could exist on a lot. And then here's just a few examples of some recent South Burlington neighborhoods that have been rethinking the way in which we do density. It's interesting that two of the four examples here are in city center. So in the top left, those are the Shanktown homes that were built. In the top right, I can only have a plan because it's under construction now, but this is a fourplex. It's going to essentially look like a single family home that's being built by Habitat for Humanity on Heinsberg Road. Bottom left is Kirby Cottages, which I'm very excited to report. I forgot to announce, mention this in my announcements, the airport put them up to be, they got the approval from the FAA to be sold back to the community. And just last week, we found out that an employer bought all seven of them to retain them as, as employee housing, which is just fantastic news. And then in the bottom right, you only see two here, but this is a triplex in South Village designed to make, to look a little more like single family homes. So I think this might be a good place for me to pause for a moment before we get into PUDs, because I just said a lot of information. And I'm going to try to turn my camera back on and see how that goes. See if I can see everybody here again.
I think if anybody has any questions for Paul or comments, this would be appropriate timing.
Yeah. In one of the, in one of the examples, you showed various ways in which a block can be filled. And one of them showed that it could be between 46 and 96 units on a block, the same size as various other densities. How would we deal with congestion and, and traffic and parking if there were 60 or 70 units in a block, which could also have many fewer?
Sure, that's a great question, Michael. Yeah, that's a great question. Let me start by saying that that was an example from Oregon. We're not proposing anything near that scale. I think that it maxes out. I have a slide in a few minutes that it maxes out at well under half that in South Burlington. But it's, it's a reasonable question. And that's where a separate project of, of yours that we've been making progress on this summer comes in. And that's, if you remember way back, we had started to work on how to redo our traffic overlay district. And we've, firm RSG to completely reinvision how we, how we set traffic standards to divide it into different areas of the city. So that in city center and areas like that, the expectation is that there is some congestion, but that in other areas, that it be dramatically lower and that that is met by making sure that the transportation system can handle the vehicles, by incentivizing in lots of different ways, people to be not in their cars. And then I think fundamentally, you know, I just showed a single block here, but the idea in a transit, in a, in a, in a PUD would be that there would be some non-residential components to it, like the, the store that you approved to exist in South Village, to start to take some pressure off every single trip being a vehicle trip. I'm happy to give you an update at your next meeting on the traffic overlay district. I just felt like that was one too many components tonight.
Um, Monica, how about you? I'm going to take commissioner questions first. I know Frank you.
Just, this is a little bit off topic, but what is employer housing? And that was in a residential zone. Are employers able to buy out blocks of housing? And did the public have an opportunity to know about?
Yeah, I don't want to go into too much depth on it, except to say that the homes were all up for sale and one employer bought all of them so as to be able to create housing for their employees.
So I would just say maybe as part of a future conversation related to COVID learning, that alarms me a little bit because I don't know if in the future Vermont wouldn't be an amazing place for employers to provide housing for their employees. And I just would, I, I think we should talk about that at some point.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a South Burlington employer that felt that there was a housing need. And so they wanted to address the housing for their own employees, really is what this came down to. But yes, we can talk about that as a separate project.
Any other commissioners right now? Frank, I see you're ready with a question?
Thanks. Paul, the, the examples you've just given us of building shapes and types, are those meant to be exclusive or is that just a way to get the conversation started on how these blocks might develop?
Good question, Frank. That was just an illustrative example. In a little bit later in my presentation, I've got a, I've got a sampling of the South Burlington proposed ones. Again, I was sort of trying to figure out how much to put into tonight's presentation. We do have the draft available of all of the types and a proposal for which ones would apply and which PUD types. And I'm happy to share that with you.
Thanks. That would be interesting. I, I would, for the commission's sake, I, I think I like your thoughts about controlling block sizes and making them feel intimate like you have. Mayfair Park being a good example of a neighborhood that seems to work really well and it's really well established. So that, that sounds good to me. well, really well established. So that that sounds good to me.
Thanks.
Yeah. Paul, I have a follow up question to that. You know, in your memo, you know, the idea of the housing types didn't come up till in the PUD section. Like, do you see them applying at the subdivision level also?
So we batted this around a fair amount this summer. There's, there's nothing precluding the, we being Kathy Ann while she was still with us and and Sharon. There's nothing precluding housing types from applying at the straight zoning subdivision level. It is another leap, though, to do so. The reason being this, if you shift to housing types as the form of density, then that's how it applies throughout that type of development. So I I actually think it's a really interesting project for you all to take on and potentially a really valuable one in terms of looking at the future of affordability in our community. But if you apply them at the subdivision level slash underlying zoning level, then they would apply throughout a zoning district. So take the R four neighborhood. And if you were to say that a duplex is allowed on ten thousand square feet and that we're not looking at density, then as as a mathematical number, then that would mean that a lot of the existing single family homes could be converted into a duplex immediately. And that's a really valuable question. And 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 it's frankly where a lot of communities around the country are going to address their affordability. But it's not a small question for us. So for now, we felt that proposing it as part of the PUDs would be a way to do it in a in a contained manner when the DRB is looking at the PUD as a whole. But we also have our eye to the future with it of saying, just like we did with the street types, you, we applied them in one form in the city and then it it opened up the conversation to decide where and when it's appropriate elsewhere.
Monica?
Sorry, Paul, if you find any examples of other communities that have done that at the subdivision level, taking a single family and immediately giving it permission and just what happened, you know, within those neighborhoods would be really interesting to know about?
Sure, absolutely. I know, you know, some, some larger communities that have done it. Minneapolis famously did it very recently. And there's an entire fascinating discussion of the the background of why they went in that direction. Cities in the Pacific Northwest have been doing it for some time as they're, you know, were largely built as single family home neighborhoods and they've built out and now they're trying to look at affordability. So yes, I'm happy to share that with you. Shall I move on to the next half here? How how this all relates to PUDs?
Yeah. Any other hands up?
Okay, thanks. Thanks for continuing to indulge me. I don't usually like to take this much of your meeting. So. All right, just a moment.
I like that my dog can be with me during these meetings. I might have to start bringing her back into the office when we're allowed to go there.
Okay, planning developments. So as you've previously talked about, there's really four PUD types that that we're focused on, traditional neighborhoods, neighborhood commercials, development, conservation PUDs, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, and infill, which is sort of can be, it can be any of the above and or its own thing. So we will talk about that also. The one that was initially on the list that we've this, that we've sort of proposed not to try to tackle immediately is the campus PUD. That was going to be largely for business campuses. And while they are a very valuable tool, it's, they they really involve a lot of their own math and metrics. And we've been trying to figure out how to make sure that you're able to get this project done in a timely manner. So that's, that that might be an add on afterwards. There's nothing precluding you from doing it afterwards, but at least staff felt that that there's, there's a a strong desire to be, to get through this. And and that's something that we could peel off. Each PUD is proposed as a floating zone. So what that really means is currently PUDs in the city have been used as essentially a waiver tool. And it's how they've been used in many communities in Vermont, that you have your underlying zoning, you have your underlying subdivision. And then a PUD is applied to modify those rules, the the setbacks, the the heights, the parking standards, whatever it might be, are are modified via a PUD. But fundamentally, it's the same underlying zoning district. The density is the same. The the limitations on on the, on the heights of buildings are largely the same. In this case, the, the idea of most of the PUD types, with the exception possibly of the, of the infill one, is that it's really treated as its own district. It's, it's, it's related to the underlying zoning district in that if it was supposed to be a lower density residential area, then the type of PUD applicable to it would still would be a lower density version of the PUD. But aside from that, it really is intended to be its own its own set of rules, which is, you know, as we talked about with the building types, it's able to have its own construction. Each PUD type has minimum thresholds for applicability. And the commission had given us some really helpful guidance early on about where to set that. As we've learned and as we've worked on the various different tools of PUDs and subdivisions and master plans, we have some recommendations for for adjusting that original baseline number that you gave us. But we'll get into that when we get into the details a little more. And then more than one PUD type may exist on a single parcel, or there may be multiple parcels within a PUD type. As long as the minimums for each are met. Resource protection. So we talked about this as related to subdivisions. Now I'm going to try to run through this as it relates to PUDs. Resource protection standards under Article ten and Article twelve still apply. That's still the, and and the lot lines still must avoid them in most cases. They apply as proposed in a couple of different ways, depending on the type of PUD. So for it in everything except a conservation PUD, the idea would be that you set aside your hazards and potentially your level ones as undevelopable land. If you remember the pie chart that Kathy Anne had shown about the the allocation of different types, residential, civic space, non-residential. First, you set aside the, the hazards and the, and the level one resources. Your level two resources are ones that are part of your calculation in the rest of your land. So these in many cases are smaller things like a class three wetland or a a, a, a intermittent stream buffer, and they can be included into a single building parcel without necessarily being a problem. If it happens to be larger, then it may need to be its own lot. And the way you would deal with that in in that case is that in a TND and in a NCD, you have a certain amount of total land that is unallocated. So you may have to, if you happen to have a very large class three wetland that the DRB did not approve development in, then that might have to go into your unallocated percentage. So again, you take the highest level resources off the top, and then the rest of it becomes your your, the area that you're planning for your neighborhood. A conservation PUD is something a little bit different. And I said when we were talking two weeks ago that some of the ideas around forest blocks might get modified depending on on how you go with conservation PUDs. This is something that staff has honed in on a a lot more in the last few months on the functionality of conservation PUDs. So seventy percent, that number is not fixed in stone, but that's a, that's a sort of a pretty average number in communities. Of the property of, of the natural, seventy percent of the property must be set aside for conservation. How you calculate that is is up to you, and we can talk about some options in a few minutes. You could base that seventy percent on the entire parcel. You could base that seventy percent on everything except the hazards. Or you could base that seventy percent on everything except the hazards and level ones. And we can talk about how those things might work differently. But in all cases, whatever you, whatever you choose there, seventy percent of the land is set aside for natural resources. The remaining thirty percent is buildable. Importantly in this, this would refer back to the Article ten and twelve language to talk about how an applicant would have a right to build on thirty percent of the land. So this is a way in which properties that might have a lot of forest block or a lot of other resources of importance to the community were able to balance out the, the essentially the properties, the the expectations of the property owner in terms of developability by allowing for thirty percent of the property to be built on. Nothing precludes somebody from choosing to conserve more than seventy percent of the property, and there are reasons why they they may choose to do so. And then lastly, you could choose as a commission, and and I know that there was some feedback about other natural resources beyond the ones that are listed in Article twelve currently. You could choose in a conservation subdivision to add other resources in there, such as, for example, agricultural parcels. And the way that would work is as a property owner is calculating their seventy percent minimum, there would be a a ranking that exists within the regulations about what they're supposed to count to get up to that seventy percent. So they might start with wetlands and how, and and flood plains and then go to forest blocks. And then they may be at sixty percent, but still be interested in being a conservation PUD. So then what should they choose as the remaining ten percent? Again, the way that this is proposed is that a conservation PUD would be an option in most residential zoning districts. In many communities, they're limited to specific areas where the city has prioritized natural resources above everything else. I think, you know, based on the discussions that you've given us, you you sort of indicated that what you'd like to do is make sure that they're prioritized in many places. And then in specific locations where the forest blocks might not apply, you would reduce the actual forest blocks themselves. But you can do this really any way that you want. I know this is not a readable graphic, but this is just the reminder of the, of how these allocations work. For the traditional neighborhood development and the neighborhood commercial center, those pie charts start by removing the hazards and then and potentially the level one resources. And then that's where the pie chart starts with the conservation one. That's really your choice as to whether you want to take the natural resources off the top. Let's say the hazards and then seventy percent of the remainder has to be conserved. Or whether you would like to have it include the hazards or level ones. And I think that's something worth diving into to understand how that would specifically apply in various properties. In the first part of this presentation tonight, we were talking about blocks. And this is where this sort of comes back to relating to the development on the blocks. So what you have here, and this is in your packet, but just arranged a little bit differently, is the four, four different ways that density can be calculated. So in a straight subdivision, it's pretty straightforward. The minimum density currently there, that you could have one, but we'll talk about that if you'd like. The maximum density is what is set in the zoning district. And then if you choose to have bonuses like we currently do for affordable housing and or inclusionary offsets, then that, then that applies. Really, tonight, the key question that we wanted to to get into everybody's minds and to and to think about the structure of PUDs is whether you would choose to go with a land based option for calculating density and development or a building type based option. I'm going to walk through these and then we'll, I'll show a couple of graphic examples of of how it shapes things differently. So land based option, fundamental based on the current underlying zoning districts. If you take one of our R four neighborhoods like the Chamberlain neighborhood or Eastwoods or Orchards, you've got four units an acre. In a, in a land based PUD option, what you, the the minimum is across the board. Minimum density becomes the, the four units an acre of the buildable area. And then the maximum is based on the minimum. So one could be, one option could be doubling it. The minimum and saying that's the cap. Another option could be taking the entire land area of the underlying district, including the hazards and applying that as as your maximum. And that's something that we had talked about over the winter. The building type based one is a completely different construction of how to think about a development. It it takes the numerical element of it out, other than for the minimum. And instead constructs the entire density based on the building types and their allocated land area. And I'll show a couple of examples of that in a moment, but he, the, the controls on the amount of development are established by the building types that you allow in a specific PUD, single family homes, two family homes, small, small multiplexes and and so on, and the scale of development on each of those. And then you you further manage it by establishing as, as I think you had talked about in the winter, the maximums of different types. So you could say no more than fifty percent multiplexes or no more than single fa, fifty percent, single family homes. Bonuses in that case, instead of being a numerical bonus, becomes a bonus of more of something. So you might be able to get more of a, of an allowed housing type. Or you might be able to get a new housing type. And that's how you bring in things like TDRs or affordability bonuses. This next slide, just sort of, it it drops out the subdivision one. And it just briefly talks to the pros and cons of these options. There's a lot in here, and I'm going to post this slideshow and give it to all of you. But fundamentally, the the land based options bring with them the benefit of they are a little bit easier to calculate and they are more familiar to how we have done development in the past several decades. The scale of the neighborhood won't be dramatically different from what you've seen, even in a PUD type. The building based one is very focused on neighborhoods that work for their at a, at a walkable scale and that introduce different housing types to try to create more integrated neighborhoods and start to hit some different price points. And in talking this through of trying to come up with this sort of pros and cons list, if we go back to the block and the block is, let's say, there's a range in size, but at its smallest, a block is about an acre. With options one and two, typically you will wind up in in a standard block with either a a, and I'm speaking largely in sort of the the residential neighborhood scale. You'll wind up with either a realistically only single and two family homes filling out the blocks because of lot sizes. Or and and in order to create sort of the feeling of an entire block, or B, if you allow more housing types, I'm sorry, if you allow multiplexes and things like that into option one or two, you wind up with having just a couple of multiplexes on a property. And then on a block, and then you've got a whole bunch of empty space in between them. So you don't wind up with it with much of a neighborhood feel. You wind up with things that are a little bit more like, you know, to use sort of an extreme example, the the large buildings on Allen Road. You don't wind up with a block feeling because all of your density has been soaked up into one building. The the pro of the, of the building base type is that it, it creates the feeling of neighborhood in all circumstances contained in there. Frank von Turkovich had asked for a couple of examples here. Here's just a couple of quick ones, and I'm happy to give the full list. But here's a sampling of the smallest of the building types as proposed. You'll see in here that a detached house would have a proposed lot area of between five thousand and ten thousand square feet and a lot width of forty to eighty feet. So this is how the neighborhood scale is met. And it's and it's how you start to hit some interesting price points. And then as you go up to the other uses, a duplex could be on the same lot area as a single-family home. And so you wind up getting more homes on the same land area. But then you start to go into something like a multiplex of three or four homes. The lot area becomes a little bit larger. It's not mathematically a straight line. But this is where they start to get a little bit larger. I think that the key thing, the key consequence of this option that is to really make this work is that the lots are pretty small and they're fairly narrow. And so what winds up happening is that the building types that I showed you in the graphics earlier showed homes that are either a little bit narrower or that are standard widths, but parking is met either in the back via an alley or from the front via a one-car garage, but not the sort of typical that we've seen in many neighborhoods in recent years that are quite a bit wider because they're so land consumptive on a block. This is a quick spreadsheet that Sharon had put together. And I know that you're going to need to spend some time with this one, but this is showing how density would be measured, minimums and maximums based on the building form base. This assumes that you can do a hundred percent of any one in a property, which would not be the case. But it's just mathematically a little hard to graphically, or graphically, it's a little hard to show it. So if you look at the bottom there, these would be minimum and maximum buildings per acre. Realistically, it's somewhere between those two because you'd have to do a multitude of each of them. And just a reminder that this is buildings per acre only on the developable land and only on the portion of it that's residential. So you would have to set aside your civic space and all the natural resources first. And I think that that's basically where I was at. So I'm going to close this and bring back the screens here.
Any thoughts or questions on that?
Well, that's a lot.
I know there's a lot in there. Duncan, you want to go ahead? Duncan, you're still muted.
So Paul, it seems like the building-based auction allows for more density. Am I reading that correctly? Is that it allows for different types, more diverse types of buildings, but does it allow for more density?
It effectively allow for more density. When we ran the numbers to look from the, I mean, you could draw the density numbers wherever you want. But if you went with, say, just doubling the minimum to be the maximum using the other method, the land-based, you would wind up with fewer dwelling units per acre total in those areas and/or sort of an odd mismatch of building types if we allowed multiplexes. So it does allow for more, but it's very context sensitive. So you can assign the building types that are allowed, the amounts that are allowed. And the whole point of a PUD is that the DRB would have guidance. This is a guided flexibility. So it's not, you can just put anything anywhere. It would be, you need to look at the context of what's around you. You need to look at the context of if there's a transit route immediately adjacent to it, then that's where the highest, the building types that have the highest density would go. And if you have single-family home neighborhoods next to it, then it winds up being lower density over there. The reason that I was sharing all of this is that they are all options on the table. As I said in my staff memo, our recommendation is that if you're going to, for full PUD types to go with the building types, you may want to think about using a land-based one for some of the infill types, you know, recognizing that it's a significant it's a significant change to people if there's, you know, a four-acre parcel next to them that is being built on. And, you know, balancing out how far you want to go in terms of really compact neighborhoods versus being complementary to what's there, I think, is a is a balance that you all need to figure out what the right line is. The other one where you may want to just go with the standard approach of of calculating it based on density is in a conservation PUD. I had it up there in my slide, but I only briefly mentioned it that if you went with a conservation PUD and you went with a standard, you know, classic parcel-based density, mathematical density, then you could allow the exact amount of housing that could have been on the entire parcel to be located on the thirty percent that you've retained. So let's say it was four units an acre and twenty-five acres, just to use round numbers. That's a hundred-acre parcel. In a conservation PUD, if you chose, you could say that you have to retain seventy percent of the property or seventy percent of the non-hazards. And then those hundred units can still be placed on the remaining thirty percent of the property. So in terms of the questions of legal takings and that kind of thing, you can draw a very clear link to say you can do the exact amount of development that you could have done before. It's just more compact. You would achieve the same thing via the building-based one, but if you wanted to draw just a direct line to answer the questions, this would be a way to do that.
Monica, you want to go ahead?
So it is a lot to follow, like the conservation one. I'm not understanding why the land-based and getting them confused wouldn't work there from a numbers perspective. Is it just that we then be forcing building types that may not fit? Or why wouldn't it work there?
The land-based one is the mathematical one. The building-type-based one
The building, yeah. Why wouldn't that work in a conservation?
The building type would work in a conservation also. What I was trying to say a moment ago was that because building types are not a, they're not a mathematical construction in terms of showing, you know, it's built based on the types that you select and the amounts of them. It would absolutely meet that same goal. It's a simpler statement the other way to say you got a hundred units before, you get a hundred units now. They both would work. It's the more that the messaging is simpler. On the other hand, what you lose from that is that you don't get the creativity that's involved with the building-type-based one. So that's sort of a question for you all, but they both absolutely could work in a conservation subdivision. Conservation
The other question I had, Paul, I don't know if you saw my email from before, but I'm and it doesn't specifically fit with this question, land versus building, but it does fit with some of the other. And in the example that you just gave, you, for a conservation PUD, you just said it's twenty-five acres, so that's a hundred units. But we might be deciding that it's actually not a hundred units because any hazards and level ones wouldn't count. So that would be removed from the calculation. And, correct?
That's up to you all, how you go about doing that. So in a standard subdivision, forget PUDs for a moment. In the standard subdivision, if you carved out a bunch of area as being a natural resource, then yes, that would likely result in a reduction over what one could do if you in the standard subdivision. So, yes, in a PUD, you could set the maximum however you want to do it. So in the land-based one that we just talked about, you could say that you cannot build on any of the natural resource areas, but you could apply the maximum density as including it if you wanted. Or if you went with the the building-based ones, then it sort of becomes a non-question. The commission has talked about both in the past, so you're right. And that's really, this is the fine tuning that you get to decide how you want to calculate that in a PUD.
So just so I'm clear, in your document for this meeting, under how environmental protection standards are applied, it says hazards and level-one resources areas are excluded from the calculation of buildable area. So I'm sorry, I know this is kind of, I just don't know where to fit this. My bigger question in my email before, but right before this meeting, was I'm still, and when I'm thinking about all of this building versus land-based, I keep coming back to the LDRs say, SEQ is an example. LDRs say SEQ is one point two units per gross acre. And if we're now talking about removing from buildable hazards and level ones, and we haven't even gotten to what do we do with core outside of hazards and such, does that LDR one point two, does that still make, does that still calculate with what we're talking about here? Because if I would just say if yes, my view is whatever we can do to let those types of parcels meet the density.
Right, so let me start with a non-southeast quadrant example first because TDRs are another level of complexity in here. Elsewhere in the city, let's say it's a forty unit an acre district. The, in a conservation PUD, you would have your choice. This is a commission choice as to how you want to go about it. Either doing the parcel-based one, the land-based one that says that your maximum density is the maximum of the entire parcel, or you could choose to be natural resources, which would be you could choose to eliminate natural resources from that, which would be potentially a small reduction or a medium reduction in density. Or if it were a, one of the other PUD types, what that language says about about it gets removed from buildable area. That means that the area from which you're considering the entire development is the remainder. So if you're going from a building-based one, if you've got fifty acres and ten of them are wetlands, then you're really sort of almost imagining that you have a forty-acre parcel and you're building from there up. And you can apply the densities and/or the building types however you want within those forty acres to retain as high or as low as you want to go. In terms of the southeast quadrant, the TDRs make this a little bit trickier. What we had been looking at doing, but we haven't, we sort of conceptual, we put it in bullet points on paper, but we haven't written it down as draft language, is that the one point two units an acre is much less than four units an acre. The feedback that we got from you all was that you don't actually want to see housing being built at one house per acre just spread widely, that that's very sprawling type development. It doesn't meet a lot of conservation goals. And so the way that it would apply is that there would be a minimum density set within whatever area you choose to build on. So let's say you decide that you don't want to buy any TDRs. Your average density is just one point two units an acre. You would still, you'd be allowed to build that, but only in a smaller portion of your property. And then you would maybe leave the remainder of it. You could choose to conserve it permanently. Maybe you conserve it temporarily and put it as, you know, reserved for future potential for a future generation to look at. But rather than building out in a sort of sprawling pattern, you would, if somebody chose not to buy TDRs and only apply the one point two units an acre, or if they were not allowed to have TDRs and it was one point two units an acre, it would still be built in a compact manner. And then you'd essentially assign the remainder of the land to either be conservation or reserved for some future time. So I think you could still achieve all the same goals however you choose to set those goals. And I know that the TDR committee had some recommendations of some properties being able to be receiving TDRs in the southeast quadrant, some not. I think we can make this work either way.
Paul, I had, I've had a couple of questions which I've exchanged with you, but let's say that I'm keen on conservation, as you all know. And I have a fifty-acre, or I can buy a fifty-acre, I own a fifty-acre lot, a parcel on Cheese Factory Road, for example. And I want, that would become, if I want to do something with it, and I choose to make it a conservation PUD. But I want to conserve ninety percent, not seventy percent. And in order, in order to get the money back that I paid for it or part of it, I would like to subdivide it into, let's say, five lots. Four one-acre lots and one forty-six-acre lot. Forty-six acres being the conservation proportion of it. But the market that I'm aiming at is for people who want a large property because they like they like the connection with nature, with those forty-six acres. They like to grow their own food, vegetable gardens and so on. And if we set a minimum, that's not possible. It would not be, I don't think it's possible for me to do what I want to do. I mean, I managed to do it when I owned a hundred and eighty acres of land down in Ferrisburg, but it was a whole different ballgame because I was able to have the conservation part of it about a hundred and fifty acres and sell off three ten-acre lots.
So that's a great question, Michael. A couple of answers to it. First, just to sort of, just to be specific about Cheese Factory Road. Cheese Factory Road, for the most part, is in the Natural Resource Protection District. And the NRP rules would still apply in the future. So I just want to be clear to anybody who might be watching. This is not proposing to upzone anything in the NRP. So
I'm using it as a hypothetical.
I know, I just, I know you're using it as a hypothetical, but I didn't want to start any rumors on the, across the meeting here. So to use it as a hypothetical.
For the record, I don't own fifty acres on Cheese Factory Road. I'm just, I just use it as fifty acres or thirty acres somewhere else, but I'm trying to incentivize a landowner who has a large parcel to go with a conservation PUD where he's going to do as much as possible. But
So, Michael, there's a couple of ways that could be done. It's not currently in the draft, but we have been thinking about that exact question because some people may choose to want to do that. One way that it could be done is it could be a straight subdivision. There's nothing that says in state statute that PUDs must be required. However, the flip side of that is that if you you would want to probably put some cap on how big a straight subdivision is because there's a lot of good things about PUDs that you wouldn't want somebody to then, you know, your example, you want to conserve ninety percent of the property. If somebody else wanted to just carve up fifty lots, that's not creating some of the creativity that you want. The way that you could do it, one, many conservation PUDs, so the seventy percent is a minimum, so somebody can always go above that. You don't have to put in a minimum density on the conservation PUD. So you could say in the development areas, you're allowed up to X amount. But as a city, you could choose to say that there isn't a minimum required. You may wish to think about that geographically as a planning commission. There are some areas in the city where you may want to, as an objective, see a certain amount of see a certain amount of development, even if somebody wanted to conserve the the minimum, the 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 majority of it. Or you might decide the conservation P U Ds don't have a minimum at all density, and if somebody chooses to do as you described, build five large lots, then that would be fine. So I think those are absolutely options on the table, and it's really, that's a policy choice for you all. It's an easy switch between those two. It's basically just deleting a line of text.
Yeah, it it's, I agree, it depends where it is, of course. But encouraging people to conserve either by a straight subdivision or dealing with this question of of a minimum, a minimum of whatever it is for or units per acre. In this case, the market, I want to sell to people who want to buy an acre and build one house on it. And and I have a big garden and an orchard and vegetable garden and all the rest of it. There's a market for it, but.
Yeah, well, and and I think that that's very much the case in South Burlington, and I'll get you to you in a second, Monica. The communities, the the areas where a conservation P U D are allowed are not necessarily across the board because there might be certain areas of the city where regardless of the property owner's desires, the city's objectives may be to see development. And I'm not necessarily saying that's the case in South Burlington, but, you know, imagine a property owner who was a large landowner in city center deciding, you know, I just want to build three large single family homes because I think that's where I can hit the market. That might not coincide with the tremendous investment that the city has made through T I F district expecting much more development there. So. Monica?
Yeah, I can you just, you just said that there's a states, there are no state statutes that allow us to require P U D, but I thought we were working to require P U Ds.
Right, so you, right, you can require them, you are not mandated to require them.
Okay.
Yeah, just to just to be clear, you, there's there's no statute saying you must do, you must do them, or you must tell somebody that they have to do it. I'm just, it's, we have very permissive state statutes in that way. Paul?
I heard or read recently that there are 700 acres at most left in South Burlington for development. Can anyone verify or negate that statement?
I don't know about the exact number, Paul, but you're probably not that far off in terms of green fielded land that is not encumbered. That doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of room for redevelopment of the city or small infill, or, you know, a place like Larkin Terrace or the Kmart Plaza. That that's not in that at all, but you're you're probably not that far off with that number.
So we could be very focused on 700 acres in terms of what we want there and what we don't want there.
Yeah. And this is, this might be an opportunity to to use this, you know, T N D building types to really do what you want to do in those areas.
It seems to me also on the far end of what you're proposing, you're getting very close to form based code. And I know I'm probably a one trick pony when it comes to form based code, but that's really the way I think about things. So I think it would be worthwhile to explore that because it's such a simple system. And this seems more complex and unnecessarily complex, particularly when you're looking at 700 acres.
Well, as I'd said, Paul and I had a little orientation earlier today, and I had said that at least from my perspective, the the world of form based code and the world of of P U Ds, when they're both sort of fully executed, are not that dramatically different from one another. They both involve, you know, having a master plan for a property that is if this built up based on the context. It's just the, it's the where that, where the work goes in in terms of designing it. Does it come from the before there's any kind of application or after there's an application? And and that's kind of, you know, the form based code involves a lot of community measuring beforehand. The P U D is here are the, here are the rules and and the structure for the guided flexibility through the D R V. And that's, I'm sure that's a dramatic oversimplification. And I told Paul that I'm sure experts in both form based codes and P U Ds would be aghast that I said that. But that's kind of my my simplified version of of those things.
And my simplified understanding of form based code is that it's building envelope, streetscapes and the T, the T zones. And that said, in every, every facility, it can be defined by those three factors.
Yeah, Bernie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, again, I might not be understanding totally correctly, but even within form based code, within the T districts, certain building types and street types are defined. And really, that's what the P U D is doing is defining certain building types and street types. So I I think it kind of gets us to the same place as a as a form based code would without, you know, defining, you know, a a T zone, you know, but you would still be defining, you know, street types and building types and, you know, block coverage and, you know, how much we want for park and and all that other stuff, which is all kind of built into the form based code for each T zone, I believe.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess the only thing I would add to that is I think that's an accurate description, Bernie. As I said at the beginning of this presentation tonight, a tool in the toolbox, there's, there's nothing preventing the city from sort of being out of P U Ds over time, of, you know, setting the underlying zoning district, expanding form based codes into other areas as you have the time to look specifically at an area and decide exactly what you want there. You know, I I would be, over time, the the P U Ds are a great tool, but they're not the only tool. They can be, other things may take them over over time once you have some more specifics to particular neighborhoods. That would be my recommendation.
Bernie, the T zones or T districts, there are five of them. And one is Denali National Park and five is Times Square in New York. And so almost everything, I would say everything in South Burlington is either a three, which is residential, or a four, which is commercial.
Right, my point was that within the threes and the fours, we design, we define certain building types and street types and things like that, which is what the P U Ds do. So you you need to define those things anyway, whether you put them in a T bucket or not. I think.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Marty. It's actually nice to be able to reuse some of those street types and building types that have been worked on and open space types. Michael, you have your hand up?
Yes, since we we decided not to deal with commercial and industrial zones, that might be an appropriate place for form based code. And, you know, but but we should move ahead with what we're doing now.
Can I just say, I was actually just thinking the same thing with Michael, but my thoughts are, again, going back to the learning that we've had over this pandemic, which hopefully goes away and we never have to face it again for 100 years. But the reality is employers may be looking at doing things differently, and it's something worth studying. And I do wonder if there aren't some of some zones in the city right now that are set up for pre COVID industrial. And maybe there are just new ways we need to think about some of that land. And so at that point, I think it would be a great idea to explore some of that. As for the work we're doing now, I think it it makes sense to continue it. But when we do have that bigger look, maybe at some of these other zones, that could be really helpful.
We had like a partial discussion about it, but I liked Michael's idea about, you know, maybe there's some more rural areas of our city where we don't have a minimum for the conservation P U Ds. And then Paul's follow up with the, you know, the areas we've targeted for development, maybe would have a minimum for those. So just so that thought wasn't lost. Do any commissioners have any other comments right now? I have a hand up in the chat I want to get to if not.
I just want to say I'm still a little overwhelmed because there was so much information. So I'm I, I don't even know where to, not that I have a ton of questions, but it's hard to even discuss this because there is a lot here. So if you can just remind us of what you'll ultimately, what are the you want to resolve tonight?
Yeah.
Well, we were, yeah, and Monica, I was not expecting that you would resolve anything tonight. I wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable as best as possible with the information that's been presented. In the next I think we're going to bring the natural resources and this together for you to have some strong policy discussions. And wherever it makes sense, we have most, we don't have all the P U D text, but we have all the subdivision text, we have the master plan text, we have the natural resources text to share and and the building types and all that. I didn't want to just dump all of it on you, but we have a lot of that ready to go. So as soon as it's appropriate to have those, to have that, that's that's the objective over the next, you know, month and a half.
And and Paul, while you're talking, did you have more presentation? I know you were doing it in kind of groups.
Nope, that was it. I have extra slides in case there's questions, but that's it for presentation.
Paul Ingles, did you have your mic on to say something?
I I just wanted to, did I hear you correctly, Paul, that you would send us the PowerPoint presentation that you did earlier?
Yep, I'll send it and I'll post it along with the, I I'll post the the slides. And now that we have go to meeting, I'll post the actual presentation for anybody to watch it or rewatch it. I'll do that, take care of that tomorrow.
Okay, Andrew Chalnack, did you still have a question?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? Sorry, my video is not working. But can you hear me? Okay, great. And by the way, I'm here with Noah Hyman. So I think Michael actually asked the question, but let me just see if I can rephrase it. So just clear on what the kind of existing proposal is or how it might be changed. So let's say I have a a large parcel and it's not in city center, say. And I believe as a landowner that it has valuable resources. Maybe it's a hayfield or agriculture, or, you know, for pollinators, for raptors, and whether or not those resources coincide with what's identified in chapter 12. And I would like to conserve most of it, but sell off a few parcels, say on the perimeter along the road. You know, can I do that? Would I be able to do that? And, you know, I guess, well, that that's the question.
So I think, Andrew, this was essentially the same question that Michael posed. That's really a policy decision. The 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 first draft of the conservation P U Ds did have a minimum in it, minimum density. But there's nothing that says that that could, as as Michael and Jessica just said, that could be moved and just say if on the remaining portion, it's, there isn't a minimum. The only thing I would caution against is, in both the examples that you and Michael gave, you talked about a small handful. There may be a threshold beyond which if 30% of a very large property could be a still significant amount of land. And when you speak about sort of efficiency of city infrastructure, I think both of your examples were basically on existing infrastructure. The commission may want to think about, you know, if it beyond the example of five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12 homes to 30 or 40 homes on a very large property, if there are any of those remaining.
And you might choose, I mean, a a a landowner could choose to use a conservation P U D type regardless of whether or not the resources, say, identified in chapter 12, let's say I have a hayfield. And, you know, I I want to conserve that. Is that, that that's a choice that a landowner can can make?
In most, in in many P U D systems around the country, it's geographically established. So you, you know, you gave your example of not city center. So there's typically areas that a community would say, no, we're not allowing this conservation P U D because there's other objectives of the efficiency of our of our infrastructure that are really important to us. We have bus lines, we have all these kinds of things. The proposal that that we have for the commission is basically in all of the districts that are more lower density slash residential or where with are a large amount of significant natural resources present on the site, it becomes an option for for a property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on on any of the discussion or Paul's presentation?
I I would just go back once again to when we're done with this conversation, I I do think that we need to look at that section 9.05 on residential density. And this again goes back to just S T Q, but the 1.2 dwelling, it's it's listed as a maximum assigned density. It doesn't say anywhere that it has to be a minimum or it has to be met. But I feel like that's an important thing that we need to discuss because if the goal of the city is to get to that 1.2 average based on gross, then we are going to have to make some tough decisions about requiring some minimum densities. Whereas if instead, as it's worded right now, it is strictly a maximum density and not something that we have to work toward, that's good to know too. And then it may, may give us the incentive to be more flexible with what a landowner can do. But it's a really important question that I think is what a lot of this interim zoning is about. You know, we have so much right now calculated based on that 1.2 and.
Right, well, and I think, Monica, I would I would just add to that 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 then brings in some of the other questions that I know you've been wrestling with as a as a commission, which is roadways and things like that. What's the infrastructure that the infrastructure should match the objectives for development? And so it it, I'm I'm agreeing that that's an important question and and will help answer some of the other ones as well. As I as I indicated in the presentation, I think the other big one to to take a look at is, I'll send out the building type draft to you tomorrow so you can see all of them. But, you know, we're being, you know, the 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 shape of development would be a little bit more akin to places like South Village than places like, you know, some of the other neighborhoods that have been built in the last 20 years, like the the golf course, for instance, in a in a non conservation P U D environment. And just understanding how that relates to to that so that you're, you know, confident going into whatever method you choose.
I have a hand up in the chat, Noah. I guess you're online over in Andrew Chalnack's box there.
Thank you very much. My my question, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my question is, it's actually two questions. The first, as a as a landowner, let's say I wanted to, since I have a a nice piece of land, I wanted to build houses for my kids and have a a a family compound, which is pretty common in Vermont. My in-laws have one in Wates Fields and you see them all over. Doesn't this, won't this restrict my 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 rights and my freedom of the land I own to 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 use it as I wish? Assuming, of course, I'm not going to put those houses on wetlands or anything like that. Would I be forced to to create minimum density for my children? And the second thing is that some of these, the proposals that I've heard tonight, I think they really have a significant impact on the the T D Rs and devalue them significantly. I think they really have a significant impact on the TDRs and devalue them significantly. For people that do hold them, they're going to be left with something that once had value, which no longer has as much.
Those are some really good comments. I think that piggybacks with what Monica was saying as well about the density, so.
I can take a shot at both of those if you like, Jessica.
That would be helpful.
To the, to the first question, and thank you for both of them, or Michael, do you want to go first?
Well, yes, is it Noah, is it Noah who asked that question? Maybe, maybe the his knee, his concerns can can be answered by saying that if, if the conservation part of a PUD is eighty-five percent or more, or pick a number, then the minimum density requirement for the remaining few acres doesn't, wouldn't apply. I mean, that might be a way to deal with it.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was going to say, Michael. And and I think, you know, to the, to the other half of it about TDRs, I think it's a clear objective from the TDR committee to retain the value of TDRs. And there's a number of ways that that can be done, both by augmenting within a PUD, within, let's say, a TND district, augmenting the amount of development or the scale of development in terms of building types allowed, and going outside of PUDs entirely, whether we're talking about lot coverage in, along Shelburne Road or just a lot of, a lot of properties in the city are, you know, let's say along Shelburne Road, Williston Road, other places have a maximum density, residential density that could be increased for just a straight site plan. So for example, the property that has the Blitbrook Apartments on it and just has recently the CCOM credit union go in front of it. They chose to arrange it that way because based on the underlying zoning, that was the maximum that they could build in terms of residential. There it is. They may have chosen to do more in the shape of another building instead of the CCOM or something like that, had they had additional residential density available to them. So I think that, you know, Michael, feel free to jump in on this too. But my read of the the TDR committee's objectives were to find more opportunities but retain value.
I mean, I have to say that having looked at the values of TDRs over time, if you go back 10 or however many years, there, some of them were $15,000. Now, the those same TDRs have a market value of about $8,000 based on the recent information from the Vermont Land Trust.
Sandy, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I don't have any particular answers, but, or questions, but I do, I'm, I would like to have some here, some input on these things from a community perspective in terms of demographics, income inequality, affordability of, how the impacts of these decisions affect affordability of housing. So I just think what kind of a community do we want to be? And what decisions would move us in that direction? So that I'm looking for that framework in this session.
Well, I guess.
Do you understand what I'm, my, what I'm getting at?
I think you're getting at diversity, among, among other things, which is, yes, absolutely, is good. And.
And opportunity.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, the, the example that I, that I raised earlier about the question of that, you know, this quote unquote, missing middle, South Burlington is, is just as much, having the same challenges as many places all around the country. We can easily see where we've seen single family homes built, two family homes built, and multiplexes that are, you know, 12 to 40 units and 40 homes in them, but not a lot in the middle, other than in a few of them in city center. That's, you know, part of why the proposal, you know, is looking at a couple of different ways to to calculate density in a PUD. And the one that comes based on the building type tries to get at that question to create more diversity of housing options, which isn't necessarily by definition, a diversity of people, but it at least opens the door for a little more diversity of, of, of incomes to to find different housing types that are complementary to one another in, in a, in a new neighborhood. It's certainly not a silver bullet to to a much larger question that you're raising, though.
And and I did, I do want to say I did appreciate the housing types and the missing middle. And I did see that as a link, but I think it's important to, to make that link explicit that 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 might be one of the things that would be a plus in terms of diversity and opportunity and, and actually demographics in terms of ages and getting, the more diversity of opportunity, I think, the more likely you are going to be, make it possible for young families that are in their early years of their earnings, which is generally lower of their earnings history or, or projection. So I think it is important to look at, look at your decisions from that lens.
I think you're, the idea of community that you mentioned, Sandy, will begin, I think it will begin to appear as city center develops. And then more so, if there's redevelopment along Williston Road, at least on the north end of it, where, where there should be a lot of opportunities for multi, multiple housing units and, and affordable ones and that. There we begin to see, I think, a community developing. That was your concept, anyway.
Well, I just want to say, I think the concept of inclusion and diversity within neighborhoods needs to be, you know, that, what I'm sort of hearing from you, Michael, is that the people of a certain income range would live in this part of the city and people of another income range would live in another part of the city. And that clearly is not consistent with the goal of inclusion, especially at the neighborhood level.
Yeah, I don't think I'm saying, saying that. I mean, I happen to live in a development with a very, very wide range of income levels from people with, retired people with very limited income to attorneys and doctors who have pretty decent income. So, and it, and it's a very nice community, so it works. But the houses all cost the same.
I would like to say that a lot of work went into the inclusion area. And I know that right now that's only in the transit overlay and city center. But I do think that there is no reason that that should not be citywide. And I think that there should ideally be additional incentives for, well, when we have them. But we should keep that in mind for creating further, if not officially affordable, keeping in mind affordability and economic diversity and everything. But I think inclusionary zoning needs to go citywide. And the sooner that we can incorporate that, the better.
So I think, Duncan, you haven't said anything, how about, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking back on what Paul Engels mentioned earlier about, you know, there's 700 acres available for development. And, you know, if we think about that, we've been talking about conservation. We've been talking all the types of different housing. And maybe I've missed something in some of these maps, but is there anywhere to identify the parcels that are available for development? And also, what, what, my, my thinking is if we did, if we look and see where is the development possible, what do we want there? You know, to kind of, to kind of get a placeholder to say, okay, what, you know, we keep talking about this, this form or that form. What is the land that's actually going to be developed or is available for development? And how do we think that's going to work? If we could see the land, is, is that layers?
Yeah, Duncan, absolutely. I think the last meeting, I went through sort of a quick series of maps. And one of the last maps basically pointed those parcels out. And if it's helpful, we can tie this conversation and exactly where you might want to have PUDs and where you may want to think about other tools like Form-based code in the future to, to that exact map. The map doesn't cover every single circumstance. There will be some infill parcels that, you know, are sort of the style of an infill PUD that aren't captured. But in terms of the, the larger ones, we can absolutely marry those two things up pretty easily for you.
Paul, can you add that as a layer in the, in the interactive map? It would be really helpful.
What's the that?
The.
The parcels that are.
Parts that were identified.
Yeah.
I think that's the width base, right?
I think, I think we already have that. And and not only that, I think we have that. And then we have a layer with what our proposed discussion points are in terms of environment and what that does to what's left.
Right, you, you essentially have it, Monica, by exclusion. That's the way it's constructed is if you take all the things, the zoning districts that don't allow development, where there's already been development, the natural resources, et cetera, then that which remains is, is that. We could probably make the inverse of it, but, but this way it's a little more flexible for you to turn things on and off and say, you know, this is what remains if we take the outer portions of the habitat blocks and say, those are less concerning. So that's why we construct it this way.
So if anything gets white on the map, if you put in your layers, Duncan, it is, it is there. It's, you know, but then we don't see the lot lines necessarily. I guess we do when we go in really tight, we still see them. But it's, yeah, it's just anything that is left unattached.
Monica, this might be a good time to mention your offer.
Monica?
Right, so while I'm happy to, I have been, I've been a major map geek because I love that. That's, that tool is fantastic. So I have, a few people have, I've walked through a few, a few examples with people and it seemed to be helpful. So I'm happy to offer like a listening session with the community and anyone who's interested in kind of saying, hey, how can I see this? How can I see that? And I'll help them, I could help them develop the map. And then I could, not to discuss it, but just to help them find the map they want to look at and then save that so that they can form their questions for a future planning commission meeting. So, and I'm happy to do that with any of the planning commissioners as well. So if that's of interest, I'm happy to hold a remote listening session. And, and I can share all of the maps that were asked about with all of you when that's done as well.
I think that sounds like a great idea, Monica. I think that not everyone's as savvy with all the layers and, you know, the buttons. So I think that could be really helpful for the community.
Yeah, I agree. I think that'd be great. And that gets to Duncan's point on, and I actually thought that's where we're headed, was to look at the, you know, the land that's available and, you know, how we're going to regulate and then fit the PUDs into that. So I kind of, at least my vision of the objective of where we're going to end up was looking at what's left and how to regulate it and what kind of PUDs would fit within that. And, you know, within that, some of them we may, as Paul said earlier, you know, designate as, you know, conservation PUD areas. Some of them we may not want conservation PUDs. We may want, you know, a neighborhood kind of setting. But I, I kind of thought that's where we're headed. And so, you know, to your point and offer, Monica, I think it would be great for people to understand the maps and how to look at the maps and determine what's left and to look at, you know, the, the different resource layers so that when we start talking about the PUDs and, you know, ultimately where the PUDs are going to apply to each of those, that people have an understanding of that, so.
And then, oh, and, you know, some of those development parcels, you know, were defined as more than four acres and less than 10% in per, in pervious surface. Like, those are the ones that both the open space report and the community group who looked at the residential housing, both focused on those specific parcels and those are in there. So, you know, if that's the, the definition that you're looking at, you know, those are actually called out separately too. Which brings me to another point. We had a, I think the email went to all of us, but we had an offer that one of the members of that community group could come and talk with us about that housing report that was done by the community group. I know that they did present at the council meeting last week. So I know some of you may have already tuned in. I know I and others may have, you know, read, read the report and maybe. I guess I wasn't sure if there was interest in having that be as a part of one of our future meetings, either a presentation or just having some members of that group be available for questions. But I said I would bring it up with the group and kind of pull, pull all of the commissioners and see what they thought.
So I would just say that I think it might be good. You know, they did present to the council, but I think a lot of people follow us separate from the council. And so even though, you know, some of us may have read it, I think that, again, kind of personal opinion, that it would be good for, you know, the public to hear it in our forum and to allow the commissioners to ask questions in our forum because the report really does, you know, supplement or, you know, some of the things we're talking about. And so, you know, I, I think there's certainly things in the report that we want to consider. And so I think, you know, having the public aware of, you know, a different perspective and a different point of view than, than maybe sometimes, you know, we get would be a good thing. And it would be good for the commissioners to ask questions and, you know, to maybe fit that into what we talked about last meeting, what we've talked about this meeting. And, you know, as we go forward, the, the whole concept of, you know, where PUDs fit with what's remaining, you know, that report kind of, you know, talks about, you know, what's left to be developed and, you know, certainly, you know, provides a perspective on, on a direction to head with that and helps to inform maybe what kind of PUDs we might want to use in certain areas. So, anyway, long answer to a short question, I think it would be good.
Can I, can I give a comment on that? I mean, it has been presented at the city council. We all have it and whatever is presented is exactly what is written in that report. And we've all had it for a long time. So I would hope that everyone can find some time to read that report. But that being said, one of the comments that I made, and I think it's a great report. I'm glad this group took it upon themselves to do this. But at the end of the report, there are no specifics other than saying there are 700 acres of buildable. You know, I, I think that what might be the better timing to invite them in is after we go through this kind of mapping exercise and have them there with us to supplement their learning as we're, as we're discussing. Like, if you read the report and then we get to the mapping conversation, I, I think it would be very valuable for them to be there with us when we're doing that work versus just having them come in and present the same report that we all should have already read and could have watched on the, and can still go back to the city council. So I'm sorry, I'm just being like sensitive to time. I really appreciate the work that they've done. I think the better time to have them come in is after we have all done, done more of this mapping and understand what we're thinking based on what we read. And then let, let them come in to supplement that.
Yeah, and, and I have no problem with the time. Yeah, and, and I have no problem with the timing, Monica. My only point is, is that we may have public feedback and public comment on that that the public might want to share with us that as commissioners, you know, I think we would certainly want to hear as part of that discussion. And, you know, what the public did or did not share with the, with the council may not be the same as, you know, what we would get as we consider our regulations.
Sandy, you wasn't on this?
I, I just wanted to say, I think you could have a discussion with them in the short term that wouldn't be very long. What I find very helpful is listening to, well, there are six of you present plus Paul tonight, and, and how you, the interplay and exchange in response to particular information. So I guess my suggestion would be that you have sort of a, a contained presentation and discussion with them in the short term. And then also invite them back after you've gone through the mapping process. But I do think that, that report has some things to contribute in, at this stage. And I also agree with Bernie that it would give the public another opportunity to weigh in.
Well, I can work with Paul on kind of the best timing. I know there's still some like, just big stuff on our plate that, you know, he just gave an overview of tonight that we may want to do first. I guess we'll figure that out. But it sounds like it would be a productive conversation. On the agenda, we, staff did put together some information and got it on the map viewer, answering some of the questions about the habitat blocks that came up at the last meeting. You know, I know that information is there as well as in the map viewers. I don't know how much we need to talk about it tonight versus in our next conversation, so.
I don't think I have too, too much to say, other than, you know, I encourage folks to take Monica up on her offer to, to get a little tour of the map viewer because it, it does have exactly this information that you were asking for and to, to show how much habitat blocks are outside of natural resources or outside of parks areas, how much of that is the inner habitat block, quote unquote, and the outer habitat block and the, the total acreage associated with it.
Is that something, Monica, that you would be willing to schedule? And I'm only thinking that, you know, I'm not sure you want to do it 25 different times for 25 different people as opposed to, you know, maybe two or three times to a group of people.
Yeah, like we did listening sessions, I'm fine with that. And, you know, if, I'm, absolutely. I think it's important and it's helpful. And if some people aren't comfortable doing that in the group, I'm very happy to do that. Couple of, you know, maybe Paul, if you wanted to suggest some times that are good for different, you know, folks. And again, it's not for anyone to ask me questions or discuss, you know, discuss the content or opinions, but it's simply to create the maps. So I'm absolutely happy to. And if somebody would rather just even discuss one-on-one, I'm happy to do that too. It's.
Yeah, and again, it might be easier to do a few as opposed to many. And, and if they were kind of scheduled and announced and we could do them through, go to meeting, then people would have a, kind of a thing to click on and a place to go and, and, you know.
Yeah.
And it, and it might be better use of your time than trying to, you know, do 25 different ones, but.
Well, and, and with your permission, we could also record it and post it.
Yeah.
You know, we could.
And I'll save, I'll save the maps so that people can see them too.
Right.
Duncan, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Paul, you sent us out a copy of Article 12 for comments to be given back to you. When, you talked about you want that by this Friday?
Well, we had previously talked about doing that by the coming Monday. I'm, I, I'm pretty flexible on that in terms of, you know, to me, all this is so intricately linked. If you, and, and there's some things, I think, the conservation PUD, even in just the last couple of weeks, I think we've evolved it a little bit as it relates to the forest blocks. So if you wanted to provide some, some, some big picture feedback to me, maybe in the short term, but I'm sort of leaning towards maybe, if you've got detailed questions, that maybe we, we allow this whole thing to merge a little more first. But this is, it, it's not, it's, it's important, but it's not pressing in terms of the next week too, because there's other elements of this that I'm working on.
I, I have a question on that, Paul. Can you explain spot zoning? I'm like, I'm looking at the maps and I'm looking at how we're defining certain things. And part of me saying, well, gee, that might be better as a level two versus a level one. But if on a map it's coming up flagged as the same thing, does it become spot zoning when we're going in and saying, oh, well, that one should be different from this one?
So, starting with my, I'm not an attorney statement. Spot zoning is essentially looking at one property or a couple of properties without the context, without, without due attention to the context of, of decisions around it. So if you had 10 properties and they were all exactly the same, and then, but he said, I'd like to do triple the density on the one in the middle just because, you know, because I've got a great idea. And there was nothing otherwise that, that, there, there was no analysis of the relationship to other parcels. It was clearly just sort of basically a giveaway to upzoning that piece. That would be spot zoning. But it's not a hard and fast rule because sometimes a property might be a 100 acre property. Maybe it's the airport. You know, the airport is by definition, something completely different from everything around it. So looking at one property in that instance, as an airport zone is appropriate in the context of, of what's around it. It, it's really about process as much as anything. It's not necessarily about ultimately the outcome. It's a process that demonstrated that you are looking on behalf of the greater interest of the community. Why, why was the decision made here and not immediately next to it? That's, that's fundamentally the test.
Okay, anything else on this? Otherwise, I'm going to move to the minutes. Okay, on our agenda, we have review and approve of minutes of November 27, 2018, December 17, 2019, February 3, 2020, February 11, 2020, and August 11, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Michael said it out loud first, so, any discussion?
Just that I'm an awesome clerk, I just wanted to put that out there, obviously.
Actually, one point, I think it was, I forget which minister it was, but we were just starting to have the conversation about what, what to take, what to leave in terms of density bonus or the amount of land density and the resources in, I don't know if it was conservation PUD, but it was definitely one of the minutes. We were just starting to have that conversation. And it's interesting, go back and look at it.
Yeah.
Good, any other discussion?
Well, oh, sorry, not, not about the minutes, but I did have.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Great, everyone, so, perfect. And then other business, Monica, did you just have some?
Well, it's actually just circling back. So, can we at least, I mean, I guess on this, the building, land versus building, that question. I, I would be, I would like, I, I don't really feel, I don't, I don't feel that there's that much of a difference, is how I'm looking at it. Like, I just want to know what is better for developers, what's better for the, the, for, for those that, for those who are impacted by the details of it, what are their comments on it? I would love to know from, from the development community because I think that that's, I mean, there's the character of the area. I understand that and the diversity, which is paramount to, you know, like what, everything that we need to do. But I don't, I don't see how both can't achieve the same outcome. So I guess I'm, I would be helpful to understand from a developer, is there somebody out there that has a very strong preference for one versus the other? Because I'm not seeing it and, so.
Well, we'll work on that, Monica. I think, you know, that, that, just to, it's nine o'clock, so I won't go too deeply into it. But fundamentally, the biggest difference is that if you go from the parcel-based one, you, unless you go with a really high maximum number, you wind up with either a loss of mix, you, you don't wind up with much of a mix of housing types or, so you wind up with all single families and twos, or you wind up with big gaps within a block because you wind up with, you know, one 12-plex, but then you've, you've hit your maximum density and so you can't really make a walkable neighborhood. The other one brings a lot more opportunity to both hit missing middle and create walkable neighborhoods. But it also puts a little bit more design requirement to, you know, to, on, from the build types about how a home is, or, or is, is presented onto the street. You know, the, you can't really do that with a four-car garage facing the street. So that's sort of constraint that comes with that side.
Is it too much to ask? Because you did make staff's recommendation in certain circumstances, but then the others you left for discussion. And I feel like we listened, but we didn't, I don't feel like we had a very fruitful discussion about it because we're all still trying to soak it in. Based on what you heard tonight, would staff be willing to make recommendations for the different types and with, with the understanding of why you're recommending that? Because that might make it easier for us to then say, agree, disagree.
Sure.
Because, yeah, thanks.
I'll, I'll make you the deal that I've always made, which is that I'm happy to make the recommendation as long as you're happy to reject it.
Yes.
Always.
Wouldn't the pros and cons that Paul listed answer several of your questions?
Yeah, I think, so we did move on from the agenda and I know a bunch of people kind of jumped off when we got to the meeting minutes. So I don't want to go too much more. But I think if people have a question on something they would want to see at our next discussion, that would be important to let maybe Paul know, like if a certain example or something, that would be helpful.
Yeah, let me know if you can by the end of this week. Because I'm, my, as I said, my objective is to always now get your packets out on Wednesday too, to give you some extra time. But that means I've got to sort of have my game plan by the end of the week, so.
Yeah. Good, well, thank you all very much.
Paul, you wanted to ask about our next meeting, whether it's on a Tuesday or.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Bernie.
I vote for, I vote for Wednesday because I, I think having it on the same night as a council is not a good idea.
Can I get a word for Wednesday?
I might be late, I'm okay with it Wednesday, I might be late joining. I have a, a work video call that's supposed to end at seven, but it might not. So as long as Bernie, you're willing to start the meeting.
Oh, I suppose. But you could also just accidentally lose your connection at seven o'clock with your work one.
I am presenting, so, to a large.
Well, that's all the more reason to get done on time.
All right, we'll set for Wednesday, the ninth, then, folks. Thanks for, thanks for the reminder.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a great one.
Good evening.